I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Welcome all. Beautiful night, very nice. All right, first thing on our agenda, the approval of the bills. If I'll had a chance to look at the bills, is there any discussion? If not, I'll let it take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills from May eighth.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Approval of the May eighth, 2024, meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May eighth.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right. Mayor's report. Fast New York grant. We reported before that it's been sent in and passed the first preliminary. And it's under further review now by the state. So we're waiting to hear back on that hopefully. That's a grant for our substation upgrade. Our summer rec program, the grant has been, it's okay. And that will fund the 2024 summer recreation program at Hickory Park for the kids.
That covers the payroll for the person who runs it and snacks and all that?
The lunches, yep. Tennessee County Legislature, we reported at a previous meeting, they have awarded us $5,000 on a first come, first served basis to put towards a grant writer. And we will get into that under our new business. Our clean energy communities, the village was awarded a grant from NYSERDA, an amount of $10,000 to be applied to clean energy projects. And villages requested one, possibly two, charging stations to replace the two current stations that are not fully operational at this time. The one is actually non-existent now at the park. And the other one out back in the parking lot is only, is only functioning with one side. So we're unable to get parks for those units now. So it's with this grant, we would be able to use this money towards those car chargers.
Oh, the ones that you're looking at putting in, are they gonna have like a credit card thing to pay?
Yes.
So they won't?
Yes.
Send them foot in the bill. Okay, good. Are they gonna be here, back there?
Yes. I wrote here, we're unable to obtain the grant for the adapted playground swing for Hickory Park. So we did go ahead and order one, you saw it in the bills in the evening. And that, when that comes in, that'll be installed at the Hickory Park. Okay. We just had our park day and my hats off to the BBCA for an outstanding job organizing, promoting, just outstanding. What a great day. Brought the community together for a lot of activities. And we were happy that we were able to get our eight new benches installed in the park and the concrete under that front pavilion. Park never looked better than it did this year. So I'm very proud of our tree park committee, of all our employees. Again, the BBCA for the fine job they continue to do over and over. We were able to take advantage of the intern that the town of Virgin has acquired from Cornell Asset Management. He will be going over developing a plan for our roads. He'll actually examine all our roads and rate them, what condition they're in and kind of what long term, short term, what should be done with all our roads. And the, I'm thankful to the town, they're actually paying for the, for his services. But the length of time that he's gonna be here, they felt that he would also be able to do the village streets. So I want to thank the town board.
That's nice.
For assisting us with that.
Is this a recommendation of like repave versus oil and stone, that type of thing?
Yes, yes. And yeah. You know, what's, what's too far gone and what, what kind of treatment? They would feel would be the most appropriate.
When does that happen, do you know?
Uh, he's doing the town now.
Okay.
So as soon as he's done doing the town.
Okay, so soon then?
Yes.
Okay.
Nortera, I'm thrilled to say we finally got a 50-year lease signed, signed lease. It's probably been since 2012 that we haven't had a lease. And we just got, got it signed. So we're locked in now for 50-year lease for the property on Church Street, which houses our electric facilities in the substation. So thanks to Nortera for seeing, getting that 50-year lease.
That still includes the 500 hours of work time?
Uh, it includes up to $5,000 a year.
There was a five there or something. Okay, 5,000 a year?
Yeah.
Of electrical assistance, right?
Right, there was no mention in the lease of a carryover.
Okay.
Typically, we go there maybe once, twice a season with our electric when they have a problem, so.
Okay.
Uh, I think they're trying to be a good neighbor with us and we're trying to be good neighbors with them and.
Good.
Work together, so.
Good, good.
Congratulations.
Yep. I attended the semi-annual NIPo and the MUA meetings along with Courtney in Syracuse, May 21st, 22nd. And one of the big things to come out of those meetings was that NIPA, the New York Power Authority, has informed the municipals that their rates are going to increase as of January 2025. Their last increase was 11 years ago. And the rate change scenarios will be brought to the MUA for discussion. And NIPA will be undergoing a $1 billion Niagara power project upgrade. So that's why they're saying that they need the rate change to cover the cost. So as of right now, we don't know the overall impact of that raise, but like I say, when they come back with their scenarios to the MUA, we'll, we'll have meetings and it'll all be explained. And the IEEP members, who are the Independent Energy Efficiency Program members, who, of which we are not a member of, we have our own Energy Efficiency Program here, BEEP, which Courtney oversees with Renee. They do a spectacular job running that. They saved the village a lot of money. When we were a member of IEEP, we were paying administration fees and we no longer have to do that and they do that in-house. Remarkable job. And they are, they are proposing though, a going from a one-mill adder to a two-mill adder for energy efficiency from all these systems who are members of the IEEP. That is pending Public Service Commission approval. We here at the village are currently collecting one mill from our customers and one mill is one-tenth of one cent, just so you know what a one-mill is, okay? So we're kind of anxious to see how the Public Service Commission's gonna rule on that. And.
So collecting one-tenth of one cent on every person or on every?
Every kilowatt hour.
Okay.
So would the public service be involved in the first one here, the, the increase that they're, they're talking about up above the item up?
From one to two. The Public Service Commissioner would have to approve that. And then, I'm not, I don't believe, unless the state mandated and it was at 2%, you know, up to two, then we would have to change ours. But as of right now, we would leave ours at one mill.
So I guess the question was, Joe, is there an oversight committee that has to approve that, the NIPA increase from?
Yeah, that was, that was, I guess that was what I was.
From, what are they doing, that the rates are going to increase in January 2025? Is there an oversight that approves that or is this just?
That would be federal, that would be FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
So they don't have to get a parole just thing your rates?
They would come back with a scenario and if they're, they typically what they do is they shoot high.
Right.
And then we would, our MUA lawyers get involved and say, no, 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 it's too much. So then they go to litigation and they, they settle on a percentage.
So that's not part of a public service organization to oversee that, that's like above that?
That's above, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, I'm glad to, yeah.
Thank you. At the conference, we learned of federal funding, which NIPA is overseeing. It's the IIJA grant funding. And we have been in contact with their reps to start an application in hopes of obtaining grant funding for our substation. So we're in the very preliminary stage of that. And we'll be working on that and hopefully, you know, if we need some more grant funding for, to offset the cost, then it's gonna hugely be a huge benefit to the village.
Does that grant writer, the $5,000 grant writer, cover all different grants?
They have their own grant writers at NIPA. They're gonna be overseeing that.
Yeah, so they're, it's, it's a great thing to find out because they have a, we talked to, we had a meeting with them and the grant writer's been doing it for 30 years, so she has a lot of experience. There's two programs, two separate programs that we qualify for both of those programs through the federally, on top of the CFA grant that we applied for last, last month. So that's three grants, we have to get one for the substation and they are all, they don't disqualify each themselves from, so we could possibly get three, three grants and give money for all that. Or, you know, so we have more opportunities to get funding. So if we don't get one, we might get another, but it'd be fantastic if we had the jackpot and got one from all three programs and had a big budget that the substation paid for.
Great.
That would be nice.
Okay, another thing that came out of the meetings was the renewable energy credits, they're called RECs. They run everyone's electric bills. You'll see RECs and ZECs. The RECs are renewable energy credits. And the ZECs are zero emission credits. They're gonna stop collecting the RECs, the state is, the renewable energy credits. They've stockpiled so much money now that they can't use it all. They haven't got enough contractors out there to take the contracts to use the money. So for the time being, even for go, collecting any more money, but rest assured, they will be coming back and in years to come, they will be going up and up and up.
Do you know how much we pay right now on that, roughly? Is it cents, dollars?
Thousands of dollars.
Wow, just so they could put up so different stuff?
Pretty much.
It's a, like a percentage or like the IEP or whatever, so many mills, it's more power used and more you pay in.
Okay. Okay. Another thing I found interesting, they were talking about the electric bus propositions are failing to pass at many of the school budget votes, which I'm not surprised. The cost of these buses is phenomenal and the charging stations aren't available, the power's not available to even charge these buses. So I think the state, little by little, they're starting to see the light here and say, hey, so. And another thing that came out of the meetings was they, they, the governor shut down Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant outside of New York City. And in so doing, we lost, I think, 2,000 megawatts of power capacity that that plant was producing. So now it's put more of a burden on the fossil fuel plant and mainly the gas, natural gas generation. That's, most of the generation now is gas. But now, now trying to make up the shortfall, they're saying if they have a really bad cold winter, they don't have the gas line, pipeline, infrastructure in the eastern part of the state to deliver enough gas to keep the generation flowing, so.
So why'd they shut it down?
Because they don't, because the governor doesn't like nuclear power plants outside of New York City.
So they shut it down here?
It was law.
They shut the nuclear power plant?
It was law, it was down up there.
So now they will?
That's right, it was, it was Como that was started the process.
It was too close to New York City and they were worried if there was a meltdown. It's hard to say.
Politics.
So, you know.
I think before long, they will start looking at nuclear again for generation. So, oh, that's all I got.
No carbon emissions and nuclear.
Yeah. All right, Courtney?
All right, so I'll have my report there, just a few things that I want to touch on. I ordered the Bobcat, that was in the budget. And today I also ordered the Zero Turn. The guys picked out a X mark, so we'll see how that works out.
What brand Bobcat? You know, you want another Bobcat or?
Uh, oh, it was a, oh, the Bobcat, yes.
It's for Skid steer.
Yes, the Bobcat. I ordered one that was a little bit bigger than the current one we have because the TOSAP Chris picks up and moves with full accountables are, is so heavy that he barely gets it off the ground and just kind of sort of skid sliding. So the one, this one picks up a little bit more, so he might be able to actually get it off the ground and move it and drive it. I wanted to bring up the possibility of creating a reserve for equipment instead of just earmarking it. I said something, I said before, it's not something I really like to do. I like to keep the money open and free for if something comes up, but in this case, we're, I think for equipment, it'd be better to have a reserve and put that money in there and have that money dedicated. So if you're okay with that, then I'd like to move forward. I have a sample.
How would they?
Resolution. Like what other impact is there to do that on other person?
Really, there's not any impact. So right now, we just have a lot of money in an unappropriate fund balance. So we would just take some money out of there and put it in a reserve. So that is basically the lockbox where, you know, it can't be touched unless it's for equipment.
Is the unappropriated reserve the 750 you were talking about?
Well, the unappropriated fund balance is just basically money, it's just money that's not, it's basically money in a savings account, I guess is the best way to say it. It's just money that's there with no reserve or whatever.
How much is it?
Right now, in, if you look at the, the, I have one. In the very back of your packet, it's not your packet, but the information I gave you is, I guess, so across, so if you look at the very top line, the cash. So we have over $900,000, almost a million dollars in cash in the general fund. So not all of that is unappropriated, but majority is. So yes, we have quite a bit there and because we have so much, it would.
So you're looking at taking some of that, putting it into a reserve? And what should we look at doing?
So we budgeted 50 this year and 50 last year for reserve and I believe 10,000 previous year. So we could start with 110 or more if you wanted to. And then whatever, we don't use, you know, if we don't use all the money in the budget this year, we could put that money in there as well. So over the course of time, it can build up. My idea for this is so we could build the fund balance, the reserve funds up so that we buy, we will be purchasing mostly the equipment, the smaller equipment out of this reserve instead of budget. And that way, we can budget for the same amount almost every single year. And that makes the budget steady so we can project out what our costs are gonna be and, you know, it keeps going to control on expenses. And it's, it feels like, you know, down the road, it's just like we'll have to increase taxes because all of a sudden, you know, before we had, okay, we had to have a new truck, but those 450s and 550s are over $100,000. So we all suddenly have to do, we had to buy this piece of equipment this year, so we can't do roadwork or we can't do sidewalks or, and then the next year, we have to, you know, change it all around where we're doing all this, you know, we have to do roadwork to catch up because we didn't do that. So my intention for the budget has always been be as consistent year to year to year as possible. So the budgets are very, very similar across the way, so that's my thought.
So what type of equipment, talking like lawn tractor stuff or cutting grass? You talking about cars, trucks?
Right, yeah. So the RTVs, the Bobcats, we could put, we could do the mowers, but mowers are easy to put through the general fund.
So kind of middle?
Loader, yes.
Equipment, not necessarily the lower and stuff?
That's right, that's right. And like, like the dump truck, I mean, we just got that, so that's probably 10, 15 years before we replace it, but that would be too big of an item for us to buy out of reserve. But for all the other things, we can put, just put money away and then do that.
So when you say start with 110, that's because you had put aside 50, 50 and 10 that they didn't use?
Uh, we put it, we, in the budget, we budgeted for, to put money in an equipment fund. So instead of just having it unappropriated, I just want to put it in the reserve so it's locked in, but we can't use it for anything else.
So the equipment fund basically is the same thing with the reserve, kind of locks it only for that?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's in the budget already, but if something comes up, it gets moved to somewhere else?
Yeah, yeah. Just slide it over.
And then that makes us week down the road if we need it.
That makes sense.
So it makes sense to me, yeah. Do we, do you have like a five-year, we've spent this much on equipment type?
Yeah, so.
What do we, a year, I mean?
Yeah, what's a track record and something like that?
Well, it's, it's different every year because it depends on what we're, we're purchasing. So I have a spreadsheet of each piece of equipment and we put in place a vehicle replacement plan. So, yeah, so every, every, say five years, you replace the 450 or five years, you replace the 550. Every two years, we replace the RTVs and the Bobcats, Skid Steers and the lawn mowers, the bigger equipment like Loader. I think that, or five or 10, I can't remember for the Loader and the Mini, but.
Probably five.
Yeah. Because when we buy things, we buy it on state bid and it's actually, it's basically our cost. So we've, we, we don't, we're not, we can't make money on these kind of things. We can't, you know, turn around and sell it the next year if you just try to profit. That's illegal, but, so with the RTV, the last RTV we sold, we, it actually was just a tad bit more than we bought it for, we got back. So if we keep, you, generally with the RTVs and the Bobcats, we sell them every two years and it's about a $2,000 or $3,000 difference between the purchase and the sale. So we had to keep it for two years and, you know, it costs us $2,000 to $3,000. So there's no maintenance, there's almost no oil changes, there's like, there's nothing. So that reduces the cost. So, I mean, so what I really wanted to do, and it's hard, but, so taking account, say the Bobcat where it's, it was say $3,000 for two years, it's $1,500 per year to own. My thought would be to try to budget for every single piece of equipment just like that and, and put that in a budget. So, so we budget for each piece of equipment, how much it costs every single year and we put that money into the reserve. So then when it comes time to buy, to buy stuff, it's there and it just comes out of there. So again, just steady, we know exactly where it costs.
So then when the surplus equipment gets sold, would that money end up back into the equipment reserve fund or how does that work?
So it was, we were still budgeted the way we do now. So there'd be, in revenue, there'd be the sale of equipment and then, and central garage equipment, there'd be the cost of the expense. So the difference between the two, that would come out of the reserve. Then we put a line item in revenue for that amount.
And it looks a great idea.
Yeah.
You have a public hearing to do it?
So I, I'm always over cautious with these things, so we do not need, officially do not need a public hearing. We can have a public hearing, but some of you guys, so the mandatory is, is a, so it's a, what's it called? It's a, I'm stuttering on the correct term now, I'm just, it's a permissive referendum, but I can't, it, it requires a permissive referendum anyway, but there's a specific term for that. So, but it is, we have to have a permissive referendum. So we pass a resolution and that resolution would be on hold for 30 days and that gives people time to come in with a petition to force a vote on the resolution. So at the end of 30 days, if there's, nobody objects, then it just goes into law.
Then we'd get publicized, that they can see that?
Yep, so we would publicize it just like we would an election. So it would go in the newspaper and then workplaces advertised around the village or here, the post office, library and the information board and then out there. And I'd put it on the website.
I'm wondering if we want to start with 50 as opposed to the 110? I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if it's, if that makes sense to, to start at the 50 point and then continue to go up or should we jump right in and go?
I, I, I like that, but what would happen to the 60 that's already there? Cause we already.
Yeah, there's money already.
Cause we have it, we have the 110, right?
Yeah.
So what, what happens to the other 60?
Another point here, I'm gonna see the 100,000 go in. That fund balance is pretty high right now. The state doesn't like to see it that high.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if we drop it down, then we're near the ballpark where we should be again. Once it's in that account, that it's.
Allocated.
It's allocated and, yeah, it's not very good.
Okay.
Yeah, balance, so I would recommend the 100,000.
And then the idea would be then you add to it every year a certain amount or?
Yes.
A amount that we vote on or?
Yes.
The same amount every year?
At the budget time, it would be voted on.
Okay, so every year, the board would decide how much to put in there?
The last two years, we've done 50.
So what do you need now to proceed? Do you need?
I, so I have a sample here. This is actually one that we passed in 2012. It was.
Do we have that, Courtney?
No, I don't have it here. I just pulled it up at the last minute, but they created three separate reserves, about $30,000 in each reserve, one for sewer, one for electric, one for general.
Who's they?
The village board.
Okay.
The, the, and that was to fund a piece of equipment. And it was only, it was only established and placed for four months. And then when a piece of equipment came in, they paid for it and closed the fund.
But ours would be ongoing?
Right, yeah. So let me, if you want me?
So it's just an example of what you. So that's just an example of what you posted to a one.
So that's, that would be what, basically what the resolution would be, and look similar to that one.
They're establishing a reserve account, basically, for a short period of time, where you would, you, here would be in perpetuity, would just continue on, okay, so, and, I guess this was kind of like a stopgap, that he needed money right away, and, so, okay.
So you want to vote on a permissive referendum?
Um, you can, I don't know if you need a vote, because I will do the resolution and present it to the board next time, and you can vote if you want to proceed or not.
Okay.
So have the resolution.
Very good. Okay, just one more, any negatives to that at all, I mean, can you think, I'm trying to think of anything negative to it, I mean?
Really, it's like, it's, what I've always been worried about is, is, you know, if there's trouble somewhere else, we can't use that money for anything, so, but it's not like we can never use it, we can take, we can take it out and do something else with it, but it, we have to go through some steps, which is another permissive referendum to close it out, and, and, um...
So it's more accountability, or something?
Right.
It's low risk, right, cause you're getting a hundred grand on something, or?
Yeah, a hundred percent we use.
It's still gonna collect the interest, still the pool, a village pool of money.
A lot of municipalities have vehicle reserve funds like that, so, just for this.
It's very nice.
Okay. What else you got, Courtney?
Oh, yeah, sorry, uh, hi, you guys might have noticed, but the transfer from Casella to Waste Management didn't go very well the first week, had quite a lot of complaints, it, it, like, both companies admit that it did not go well, Waste Management was very apologetic, they said they, it was, it was a five out of ten on their scale and four outs, and, um...
Fifty percent discount.
Yeah, right, they, whoever established, I mean, uh, they're all computerized and kind of robotic in the way they have to do things, and whoever created the route, created it by numerically instead of go down one side of the road and back the other, so it took all day.
They, they asked me directions, they stopped in the garbage truck, "Do you know how to get down?" I was like, "Yeah, you have to go up," you know, they didn't know where they were, so that didn't help.
They didn't have maps, they didn't have any streets, you know?
Recycling truck and the garbage truck were both stopped in front of my house that morning, and they were, one guy was asking, "How, how are you doing this, which way are you going?"
The guy's probably not even ever been in our village, you know?
No. So it didn't go well, but I think yesterday went a lot better, um, the route manager came in and said he felt like it went a lot better, but they're still tweaking it, shows it'll be better next week. Casella wasn't very good either, they, they took a long time, almost a week, to get the totes, some, some of them they missed, some, some people forgot to put it out, or, or took it back too soon, uh, we've been going around and picking those up, at least seen them, and, uh, throwing them out, that's that, uh, taxes are, are, we're in the middle of tax season, and it's, uh, we're, the last few days, we've done a lot, and, um, so they're, they're coming in really, really well. So, that's it for me.
You all got a copy of Gary, our CEO's, EEO's report?
Yep.
Looks like with spring and summer upon us, he's, the number of permits is lining up, so he's kind of busy.
Oh, yes, that new house on Lee Brice Street, all of a sudden, there's just this big blue house there.
Yeah, it's right behind Bob Bausch's house, it's like, oh my God, he's looking right at it, I'm thinking, cause I know he owns like eight acres back there, and I said, "Did you allow somebody to build there?" He said, "I didn't own that." Oh my God, and it's looking right at his backyard.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good size house. It's Wallace or somebody from Churchville, I think he said.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big house, jeez.
Very good. Courtney, do we have to okay that sewer?
Yes. I've got number two.
All right. Okay, any questions on the CEO's, EEO's report? If not, I'll ask for a motion to accept the officer's reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the officer's reports.
There are seconds, all in paper?
I...
Trustee concerns, where did that?
Um, I feel like these are not concerns, but same thing where I'm interested in a tour, we could schedule a tour.
Okay, we got that on?
On that time. And then just the longer street drainage, or maybe this intern, when he analyzes the streets, that'll be on his list, longer street, I see there's a driveway permit for fourteen longer street, and it seems like if the, if it was drained, I see might not have a problem.
I'll, uh, I'll meet with him and bring that up.
Thank you.
No concerns, just praise to the village guys for, you know, the flags, the military representation, the park days, just wonderful job. In front of the carriage house, there was a grate, Joe, that was twisted, you know, those little square drainage grates, twisted up, and I tried to walk on the dog, tried to get it down, and, um, it's still been moved, but I didn't know if the guys saw that, or someone...
In front of the carriage house?
Right in front of the carriage house.
And the owner said, "You have a mortgage too."
Courtney, you'll have the guys look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, something, somebody could trip on it.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely. That was a, really.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I reached out to Gary Sisery about getting together for some zoning stuff, and he said, "Hey, anytime," so I hadn't connected because of our vacation and stuff, but we're planning on getting together, and I noticed the house on nineteen here, they're doing some grass cutting and some rehab, so we're hoping that maybe he's getting a word that, yeah, something's gonna happen there, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to see the owner, a couple doors down's been doing work on the front of his building.
Yeah.
Scraping and putting the wood in, so, so that's, you know, thanks to him for...
They built some lawns that were opening up downtown, I heard.
And then, I, I briefly talked with Courtney about, I know it's not gonna be Oxbow that we're dealing with there, and it's another agency that's building, buying land and building there, um, I'm wondering if we could get information from Oxbow on what kind of stuff they're gonna be discharging into the sewage system, I'm assuming that's our sewage system there, okay, so, cause if it's oils and things, we don't know what's going into that, and if it's gonna be something detrimental to, you know, the, the system, it'd be nice to know what that, that discharge is gonna be.
Yeah, and that is definitely something to be required, uh, before they...
Do they have to do like environmental, put a green treatment system in? All right, so that's my concern about that whole big thing, cause, you know, I mean, there's a lot of grease and oils there, and, so...
That just happened at Stamp, they put a halt on that.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's it.
I think our, your Eric Weiss with CPL will...
Oh, yeah.
Take care of that, so...
What's the name of the organization that's...
Uh, it's GE Virgin Owner LLC.
Okay, but they're not from Virgin, right?
No.
So Oxbow's not going up there?
So Oxbow is, it's just, uh...
They're doing it under the LLC?
An LLC is...
Just to kind of, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, so they're gonna own it, build it, and then lease it to Oxbow, so it's still gonna be Oxbow, it's just...
Right, so apparently that's how Liberty Pump is too?
Their property's under a different...
Yeah, who knew?
Some taxes and stuff there somehow.
Okay, so, yeah, I would think, you know, whatever, the information's gonna have to come from Oxbow as far as what their discharge is and stuff, so, okay, that's all, okay.
The email I received said that they were hoping to start breaking ground in August.
Oh, great.
Very good, and how do we stand with putting a new truck on in for electric?
We're, uh, well, our substation upgrade, our lines already go up there, uh, we've got a bid opening this Friday for, uh, some more of the substation equipment, uh, so we'll see how that comes out, and, uh, we're moving along, so...
Very good.
We'll, uh, have to get the bid, and the board will have to approve it, and get it on order as soon as possible, because some of the stuff's fifty-seven weeks out, and, uh, you know, we're gonna be fighting them, cause they're gonna be building a building, and they're gonna want power when it's, when it's done, so...
I heard that Dollar General was kind of on the negative side there, because they, the town put some restrictions on the architecture, they didn't want it looking like a boxy thing like the one in Byron in Churchville, and so, I don't know if they went back to the dry border, if they just gave it up.
I think they pulled the plug on it, from what I heard.
That's, that's what I was thinking, too, so, yeah. Good, yeah. You don't need three of them within four miles.
I don't know if you've ever been in that one in Byron?
Oh, yeah.
That is the most well-organized and neatest one I've ever been in.
It is very nicely, very nicely done, but I think they don't like the appearance of the block, you know, it looks like a pole barn.
At least the one in Byron does have a better facade to it, it looks a little bit more like, you know...
Compared to what was there before, it's all...
Approval, absolutely, I think it would be an approval, but, yeah.
Looks good. Okay, anything else, Bob?
No, that's it for me.
Hi?
Uh, I was just gonna mention that the grate and the sidewalk that Mike mentioned, other than that, you know, uh, guys are doing a great job for the village, you know, we're blessed to have as much work done by two guys as what we should get done here.
They were blowing sidewalks off this morning, and wow, looks nice, really looks good.
Okay, good, we'll pass that on over to Courtney.
Absolutely.
All right. Under new business, designate equipment as surplus, Courtney, what surplus equipment are you proposing?
Uh, my, in their pack, I did add one, additional one on there, I forgot, so the two thousand nine International Digger Dare, we have the new one in, uh, so that we don't need this one, uh, the nineteen eighty-four Sewer Jetter, um, obviously it's older than dirt, uh, hasn't really worked in a long time, um, and, you know, we're not gonna put the money into it that we require to keep on going, and again, it's thirty years old, forty, forty years old.
You will sell that, you'll just scrap it?
Uh, we'll put it up for sale, see what happens.
Be surprised, we'll be able to buy it.
Oh, really?
Somebody might need parts off of it, or...
It's a diesel engine, isn't it, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a diesel engine, so somebody might want it just for the engine and the pump, we'll see, uh, and then the last thing, and I forgot to put it on the packet I sent you guys, Monday is the twenty twenty-one Bobcat, so I ordered that, and, um, oh, and the, the, the zero turn, the gravely zero turn mower, those, one of those four things, the, so, yeah.
Cause you ordered a new twenty twenty-four mower, so then you'll sell this twenty twenty-four?
We buy, we have two mowers, and we buy one every year, so, they, they're two years old, so we sell them, and usually the same with Bobcat, so that way we're only buying one of those each year.
So what do you need, Courtney?
Um, so I need a motion to designate as surplus, uh, it's required by law for us to sell it.
I have a motion to designate, um, the four equipments, parts listed here as surplus.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Okay, the next thing is our manhole restoration project bid, we received only one bid. I believe it's to restore, what, twelve, Courtney?
Yes, twelve.
Twelve manholes, these are the ones that they've identified as being a lot of infiltration, uh, unfortunately, two of them are in my yard, but, uh, they need to be taken care of, there's a lot of water being, you know, going into those and, uh, ends up in our sewer plant, so, um, we need to get a handle on this infiltration, and, uh, this, this is the only bid that we received to do the work to rehabilitate those manholes, so...
How often does it happen?
What's that, these?
The infiltration?
Oh, it's, uh, it could be twenty years, uh, you know, it, it depends.
And are the twelve manholes all manholes in the village, or you, there's just like certain?
No, there's a lot, there's a lot more than that.
Okay, that's what I thought, so just pick twelve?
These are the twelve they picked, I think a lot of them are along the creek, many creeks.
So this is one that crease rises, they get infiltration into those, is that the deal?
Yeah.
So they're sleeving them, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, the, the problem they've got, Bob, they already have sleeves, and I think most of them have sleeves, so they have to actually tear some of the sleeve out to see what's actually going on behind it, to see if they can repair behind it without pulling the whole sleeve out.
Sure.
So until they really get into it, they, they, they really don't even know what, what they're getting into, they have an idea, but...
Yeah, so is this likely to go up, or their bid is their bid, I mean, if they find...
Well, that's, I believe their bid is their bid, we have so much money, and that's all we have.
Yeah, okay, okay, what if they come back and say, well...
And saying that, Courtney, we have so much money, and that's it.
What if they come back and say, "Well, we can do ten instead of twelve for the price," I mean, is that something that may happen?
It's, it's possible, depending on how much damage they find.
Yeah.
The end result is that they, they wanna coat the inside with a PVC type of material, make it, they, they hold it tight on the inside.
Okay.
I mean, you ever, you ever see how they coat water lines?
Mm-hmm.
Basically, they put a sleeve in there, and then they inject like concrete or whatever, I mean, that's basically the idea from, I believe, that I...
Yeah, with sewer lines too, they sleeve them like that.
Yeah, but it's bigger, and be of a PVC type of material.
Yeah, that's good.
That's the idea.
Do we have any idea, is this a high bid, do we know, I mean, has this been done anywhere else?
Yeah, so, uh, CPL have used them, uh, this company before to do this.
What kind of timeframe do we look at, like this year, next year?
This fall, I believe, Courtney?
Right.
Okay.
But he said they wanted to start this fall.
Very. So, can they work if we have a high water condition, though? I mean, you know, I mean, if the creek is high or something, are they able to get in there, or do they have to wait until it goes down?
Yeah, I don't know if they can do it with the water flowing or not.
It's reflex seal.
Yeah, or caulked in or something.
Yeah.
Spray the whole area. Looks good.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept these, the bid?
I make a motion to accept the manhole rehabilitation bid.
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do have one question, I won't even know if it's...
Yeah.
What does it mean when it says alternate bids four thousand? It's on this, it's on that.
Oh.
Yeah, um, there, there was, when they submitted their bid, there was this bid, and then two, um, alternatives, or, um...
Oh, that's the new four-foot, possible?
Right.
Manhole, and, so that's kind of like their contingency.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have some, yeah, some happening.
So are we okay in the two twelve, then, is that basically what we're doing? Same yet, since two twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next thing I hear, uh, is the, is our building, you're the Tully Building, uh...
Sorry, yeah, the fire department.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, approval of some new members to our fire department.
That's always good.
So what would...
Which is always a good thing.
What would be a reason we would not approve someone that they suggested?
Well, if you knew, if you knew something on background, someone, they do background checks on all their applicants, but say, you say you knew something personally that you wanted to say, uh, you know...
Not sure about this guy, or whatever, go.
It's a work, I think, it's just a requirement, kind of thing.
It's nice to see people volunteer.
Yeah.
Think that's a strokey in Cub Scouts, when it just got messed around.
And is, is it, it says Virgin Fire Department, so that's shared between the village and the town?
Well, it's actually a village fire department, uh, that's how they're set up as a village fire department, that's why all their applicants have to be okay by our board.
But the town does give money.
But, oh, yeah, the town gives money, Rida gives money.
It's, it's something that, yeah.
Yeah, they collect.
They collect from a lot of different...
For fire service, you know?
But we all...
So it's a village, that's interesting.
On, on paper, there is... On paper, there is, there is another department of the village, the sewer, sewer electric, DPW. Other, other.
That's, I was wondering, is it because of where they located that?
Other municipalities, all their, the fire departments, like, like still completely at part of their, their. So they pay their bills, they pay, they buy purchased equipment. By a long time ago, they just let them go on their own and we just pay them and they do their thing. They don't have to worry about it. The Oldfield is, yeah, it's.
Does that mean they have their own board too?
Yes. I attend their meetings pretty much every month. I go to their meeting. And I am so amazed at the work they do there, the dedication. Stop notch. They give a full report at every meeting. We're so fortunate to have, have that fire department here.
What is Eric's role now, Eric Weiss?
He was president.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's gonna stay in that position or not because he's so busy with work, but he was at the last meeting.
Okay. That's good.
He does a great job there.
Yep. So we need approval for these four?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the four members of the new, new members of the Virgin Fire Department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we're on the Leto Lee Building. We were up, I, I know myself and Courtney and even the girls in the office here, we've been looking at the front of this building saying, boy, it looks pretty beat. Okay, it's just.
This building we're in right now?
Yeah, the front. It's all, it's all just brown and starting to fade with the sun on it. We thought it'd be nice to see about getting the front of the building painted with everything else downtown looking so nice now. And you with our neighbor two doors down trying to make his look a little better now. We, we just wanted to bring forth, you know, come forth with, you know, possibly painting the front of this building. I mean, we have money in our budget for buildings. I guess we'd like to get, go off, see, get some quotes, see what it's gonna cost. And, you know, then we come back to the board.
And it's just the front? It's not all the way?
No, well, it's mainly the front we're looking at.
I always think it looks so nice when I drive by. I always think, oh, yes, it could.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like closely it's starting to get pretty beat up and the parts that are metal flashing, they painted metal flashing. That's all coming off and there's inserts underneath the windows of wood and those are all cracked and they're coming apart. So just turning up a little more compared to all the other ones.
Have some, a little more contrast rather than just all brown.
Can't hurt to get bids, I guess, right?
Yeah.
You'll send it out for a bid? Is that how it works?
We'll get quotes.
We'll get some quotes.
See how much it's gonna cost.
Okay.
Then we might have to put it up for a bid.
Okay.
Then who would pick colors if you wanted, if you wanted to change it? Because I think it looks, the colors, I like the color scheme.
Well, there, isn't there a scheme that because it's a historical district, they have to maintain?
Yeah.
So there's a color.
Historical colors.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
You're correct.
You can certainly.
But you're saying brown, but it looks kinda gray to me or whatever. It looks good. I think it looks good. Not saying it doesn't need repairs or maintenance. I just like the colors.
But I think there's colors we can pick from, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you're correct. There's a historical palette you can pick from, colors.
Yeah, so that you don't get some, you know, bright, blind colors.
Okay, good. Next thing is the grant writer. As you know, we received five thousand dollars from Genesee County for a grant writer. They provided this service a year ago and they've done it again this fiscal, so we've taken advantage of that five thousand dollar grant. I, the, the question was, are there other grants out there rather than a park grant that we might be able to go for? I've called, I've talked to Eric Weiss, see if there's anything we could do with our sewers. And he said that we would have to document, like I said, I'd like to start replacing subject tanks. But he said we would have to start documenting that now, taking pictures as we go this year and get a track record of of the shape that they're in before we can actually go for a grant, so that would be a year away. So we've told Chris, our wastewater treatment operator, to, when he's pumping tanks, take pictures of the tanks. So we, we kinda get a, you know, feel for the condition of these tanks. So that, that was out and I talked to Labella Associates and asked if there might be anything for roads or for sidewalks and he said, no. There's, there's nothing there, so.
About drainage on, on Munder? I mean, that'd be a great project to get some funding for.
There again, we would have to tear the road all out.
Reconstruction.
I did put a call into our engineer to give me a ballpark figure of what it would cost to do that. From Clinton Street up to where the, the schoolhouse. So we're waiting to see what that is, but. So parks, the park grant is still available and do I wish there was something else we could go for? To be honest, yes, I do wish. I wish it was something we could write a grant and possibly take advantage of, but it looks like the park grant is, is what is available. That the village might be able to take advantage of. It's a very competitive grant, I'll be honest. But we went for that grant last year and we did not receive it. The town also went in for it for Robbinsburg Park and they were also denied. So our thought was to try and have a different grant writer, Labella Associates, write the grant this time. And, and it's changed already in a year of the needs for that park already, you know. So we've come up with some new items that we feel would be great there.
How much do they charge for grant writing? Is that five thousand covered or?
Yes. That covers the whole, that's their fee, five thousand dollars.
I see.
Will they help with multiple grants if we found more grant opportunities?
Up to five thousand dollars?
Up to five thousand.
And this one is gonna cost five thousand dollars? So after this one, we're done. Or unless. Unless we say no. Didn't write a grant. I mean, you mentioned it before, if there's an opportunity to write a grant, I don't know. That would be a possibility. I don't mean to throw in your question.
Yeah, no, I know. No, I have some experience with submitting grants. Not for municipalities, of course, but I'm not sure about the writing of each of the segments of them.
Well, like I said, I've checked with two engineering firms and there's just not a lot out there right now that we can, I feel we can go for.
If we don't use it, we lose it, right? For this year.
Yeah, we already were awarded if the county, because we told them we were gonna do, do a grant.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of.
So we're giving five thousand or?
Yeah, that's.
Good.
Yep.
That's good.
Okay, so is there a motion to have Labella Associates do our, submit our park grant?
Yeah, I make a motion to have Labella do the park grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Next thing is the community garden. And I showed these, that's what it looks like. That's what it looks like right now.
Be a nice dog.
You can, you can see, you can't even see the garden boxes anymore, right? The people who have garden boxes, it's their responsibility to, you know, at the end of the year, clean them out and then prepare them. But over the course of the existence of that thing, every year we've had to go in there and clean them all out for people. And then we clean them all out and people say, oh, yeah, I sign up. So they sign up and then there's only four of the eighteen plots are actually being used. Everything else are just six foot tall bolted ones.
So do people rent them or how do they do it?
They're twenty-five dollars a plot.
Oh, for the season, not for month, right?
For six months.
Summer, whatever.
And do you guys water them too?
There's water there.
Oh.
In the beginning, there was a lot of people that took advantage of it, but it kinda wore off, you know, it kinda dwindled down.
And is there like a sharing of?
Like everybody's got their own little thing there and plant which one?
It's like five by eight.
Oh. So what would be the reason they would wanna do this here instead of in their own yard?
I don't know.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
So why do we have it? That's what I guess what I'm getting at.
It was just something that happened years ago.
Cause it was a neat.
Yeah, so.
To get people together?
Originally, Chris, it was Chris Vay's idea and he, he will, he sports about it all the time because his idea was have it up at the sewer plant, right? Because there is the compost up there, there's the rich soil, there's water, the effluent food plant from the sewer plant that is actually usable. So it would be a way to use all those things and to have, and give people a place to garden. But then Gary came, who was the VP supervisor, and the board said, okay, and he, you know, built that with the fence and the everything. So it kinda got way away from what Chris's vision was of something very simple out back there. And then it became here and then it just kinda, you know, and then there's all this work because of, there's a fence and there's all the bushes all the way around it. So we've had to weed the beds and go inside and mow in between the plots all the time. There's the water, the water line, they, they, some places, the water line is underground, some places it's not. So it breaks all the time.
If they wanted to continue with it, they could do it up there?
Potentially. I don't, I mean, that's up to the board, but I would.
No, I'm saying if they started there, if somebody really, really, you know, you say, well, you can continue, you know, up where they started, if that's possible.
Personally, I wouldn't even want them behind there doing it. You got the liability of falling in a.
Yeah, that's true.
Wood chuckle back there, breaking their leg.
You gotta bring water and all that.
It's costing us about a good thousand dollars a year, man and labor to run that thing.
It's not even a property, right?
It is now, but we had a lease on it now.
We have a lease.
A couple of weeks.
That's part of the mortar?
Mortara, I think.
I have gotten a complaint from across the street. The neighbor called me, emailed me, and I talked to her on the phone. She's complaining about looking at that. She wants something done about it. So I was gonna bring it on the agenda to bring to the board tonight.
What would be involved in disassembling it? I mean, how difficult would that be? Are there blocks, wood, is it timbers, what's?
The blocks are just stacked.
They're just stacked.
Here together.
Just be collecting them?
Pulling the fan all out and. Scooping it all up?
Well, depends on, if we wanna try to save those blocks. If we don't wanna save the blocks, they can go in with a clam bucket up the lower and just go grab and dump it, grab and dump it, grab and dump it. And then, you know, they may go through that really fast. But the fence, you know, that'd be a little more careful. Save the fence and whatnot. The blocks and stuff, if we just get rid of the blocks, it should go pretty fast. And then around the outside where it's all grown up, we can use the mini with the flail mower, not, not all down for now.
Is there anybody in there currently renting?
No.
No.
There was three or four people we got who came in and asked if we could do it this year.
Yeah. So it's totally empty?
Yeah.
They done three or four people?
No, no.
Right.
Nobody, yeah, we didn't, we told everybody no because, you know, Joe put it in.
Yeah, I put it in months and months ago, months. Anyone interested, because if I didn't get enough interest in it, then I was gonna close it down. Cause I, we cashed five thousand dollars a year in labor. Two guys, we got enough, our hands full with two guys here as it is, much less trying to maintain something like that. I had community or Genesee justice people and you're trying to weed, you know, I get them, try to get them in there to try to catch up on it.
And the community action day case.
Community action day also, yeah. I felt bad for the kids having to go in there. It was Courtney's idea.
So what, so what do you, what do we propose?
I, I propose we just disassemble it and get it out of there, put it back to grass seed, how it was before.
Save the fencing.
Save the fencing, possibly sell the blocks. I've seen them on auctions. I mean, you can stack them out of pallet and sell them, sell them, you know, get what we can out of them.
Even if you offered them to village residents, they might come over and take a few if you wanted them, right?
Yeah. Some people need a little break wall or something where, you know, they need to hold something back. Who knows?
I'm always looking for a random block.
Drop some reroute through them to.
Not a hundred of them, but.
We'll have them delivered.
So I'd say if there's somebody in there right now, I'd say take it down.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
I'm gonna ask for a motion on this. Can we disassemble this? Because it is part of infrastructure on the village and.
What, what's, let me just ask what's gonna happen. Nothing changes with the lease, right?
No.
That's incorporated in the area that we're leasing?
Within the property.
So we can still use it for something else possibly?
Yeah.
Future? Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you know, Mike mentioned like a dog, something, dog park or something, it'd be nice. But I'm not saying this goes now, but.
Oh, I'm with you on a dog park idea. Somewhere.
That's for the future. Liability, but still.
Yeah, yeah.
Still would be nice.
Yeah. Can't get people to pick up their dog feces on the sidewalks, much less, whatever. That's another day.
Yeah.
Motion to dismantle this community garden?
I'll make a motion to dismantle the community garden.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I did reach out to the sheriff's department, it's not on here, but I did reach out. I'm waiting for a call back from Sergeant Hale, I believe his name is. And he hasn't called me back yet. So I told him, you know, it's time to have another meeting here face to face. And I'm waiting to hear back from him, who told him about the hot spots in the village here that seem to be, you know, the worst.
I've seen more around lately, these last few weeks.
I've been hearing.
I've seen a lot more sheriffs and even troopers and I'm hoping with the summer will be ODs to resource officer again.
We have, we, I talked to Josh at Park Day and actually, and Joe Craft was here. He's running for sheriff and I told him about, you know, my thoughts about the village and what was going on. So he was gonna go back to the department and make note of that and kinda put it on the hot list, he said, so.
I'm surprised what their name was here talking about that short street there, that there's all that fast traffic coming down Clinton. It's like, you wouldn't think in that short distance.
When I'm walking, I'll see cars flying down through there. It's unbelievable.
And I keep hearing four wheelers, loud four wheelers back on Park View.
Yeah, you do, okay. But you know, interestingly enough, they'll come up Richmond, but they won't come through, cause I blocked, I mean, Gary, when Gary was here, he put big boulders. And if I get a kid with an ATV or something, I will politely go out there and say, you walk it or you don't come through.
There you go.
Where do they go through?
Uh, where I am at Springdale in the subdivision, I've got a chunk of land that they have and they come up the end of Richmond and they go right into the village property. And they're buzzing down on the, the Frisbee cars.
Oh, right.
So, yeah. But anyway, yeah, but I appreciate it. I mean, I was on.
You braced yourself?
I had to sit Richmond the other day and I'm going, holy crap, all these kids.
Yeah.
Jeez.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, I'll let it be known, it's extra, what's going on, so. And we'll have a meeting here. Usually once a year we have a meeting.
Yes.
And.
They'll just come to one of our board meetings?
No, they come during the day we set up on time. I mean, when they're coming, I can let you all know if you all wanna be here or anyone, if you're open to any of you.
They will come to the board meeting if they want them to.
Okay.
They have in the past.
Okay.
Jail's opening end of July, if you haven't heard.
Oh, yeah.
End of July.
End of July. Very good. Pretty cool. Side dirt tour, but it's really, really neat.
The last thing on, under the old business is what, about a tour of the village facilities. I don't, Courtney had an idea, we could actually do it during a board meeting. We could have us open the meeting and we could go, you know, visit the various buildings. Or if you wanna do it, we can't do it three together because that is basically a meeting, three trustees can't be together.
State law says that if three, four members are together and discussing village meeting, it's a meeting. Discussing village business, then it's a meeting, then it has to be advertised so the public can be there.
So even tours?
Yep.
Okay.
So the public members have the opportunity to go on the tour with us?
Right. If you guys go to, if you guys go to Morgan's after this meeting and sit and have a beer and just three of you and you're talking anything about village business, that's a meeting and it's unawful.
I'm sure there's some members that would like to do a wireless.
If you talk about, go down there and talk about baseball, you're okay, but.
So the best thing would be to do it during a board meeting then? Otherwise, there's really no way around this unless we separate.
Right.
Unless we do like a. How about we do like a facility at a time?
Right, like a couple things.
We'll go to the sewer, see what's playing one night, and then, you know, continue on, what's good idea, so, yeah. Because I'd like to see that facility up there.
The sewer plant, I would suggest that we have Chris there, because he's gonna need, I mean, he'll explain the whole process and how it all works and everything going on up there, we would need him. So that would require some a little bit of overtime. With electric, Joe's got that all taken care of and, and, and DPW too, so.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good.
So are you saying you'd rather have the sewer done at a different time, not during a board meeting? Or do I?
It can be done.
It's okay?
During, it just, we'd have to take Chris overtime. Which is not a big deal, but.
So we would, we start and then go up and then come back and continue the meeting?
Yeah, I think it makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, anybody in the audience, if they wanted to go with us, they could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, we'll set that up then.
Yeah, so one of these, usually the start meetings are pretty light, so if you don't have a lot on the agenda, then we can just.
Okay.
We'll play on, we'll play on the next one.
July and August?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on that list would be things like the electric substation?
Yeah, we have two substations.
The sewer plant.
The DPW, where our, one of the equipment stores for. Sage, yeah.
And also, you know, if you guys wanna go see something by yourselves ahead of time, or any, anytime you want, you're free to do that. Come here, see me anytime, or you go down and stop, stop seeing Chris anytime, or, hey, you know, I mean, you're free to.
Very good.
roam around the country.
We're good. Speaking of Sage, I mentioned to Courtney about, we were looking into getting it cleaned, are we back to just having our guys clean it?
I spoke with them, and I, and I told them, I said, you know, when it's a rainy day out, and nothing else is really, it's not like you're gonna go out and do a lot when it's pouring rain, go in there and give it a thorough cleaning, and so, I looked at that, and they assured me that they would do that, so.
Good. Yeah. Yeah, because if we're running it out and people from the public are, are using it, you don't want them to get a bit injured.
Right, right.
Word'll spread fast, like, oh, yeah, it was a mess.
No, Anna was very correct in what she said, I was in there too, and I was noticing things. So, no, it's, I addressed it with the guys and.
Well, that'll save some money for hiring cleaning people.
Yeah, I mean, when it's raining, it's a perfect time to get in there and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Clean it really well, you know.
Yeah.
So we'll see how that goes.
Very good.
Okay, yeah. Anything else before we proceed to close? Motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's hope it warms up.
I wish most do.
Put extra blanket on the bed.
I know, yeah, this morning, but I. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the Confederates, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in essence.
Welcome all. Beautiful night.
Very nice.
All right. First thing on our agenda, the approval of the bills. I'll have a chance to look at the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills from May eighth.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of the May eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May eighth.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Mayor's report. We're, uh, past New York grant. We reported before that, it's been signed in and passed the first preliminary, and it's, uh, under further review now by the state, so we're waiting to hear back on that, hopefully. That's a grant for our substation upgrade. Our summer rec program, the grant has been, it's okayed, and that will fund the twenty twenty-four summer recreation program at Hickory Park for the kids.
That covers the payroll for the person who runs it and snacks and whatnot?
Lunch is, yep. Genesee County Legislature, we reported at a previous meeting, they, they have awarded us five thousand dollars on a first come, first served basis to put towards a grant writer, and we will get into that under our new business. Our clean energy communities, the village was awarded a grant from NYSERDA, an amount of ten thousand dollars to be applied to clean energy projects, and village has requested one, possibly two, charging stations to replace the two current stations that are not fully operational at this time. The one is actually non-existent now at the park, and the other one out back in the parking lot is only, is only functioning with one side, so we're unable to get parts for those units now, so it's, with this grant, we would be able to use this money towards those car chargers.
Oh, the ones that you're looking at putting in, are they gonna have like a credit card thing to pay?
Yes.
So they won't?
Yes.
Three electric?
Put in the bill.
Okay, good.
Are they gonna be here, back here?
Yes. I wrote here, we're unable to obtain the grant for the adaptive playground swing for Hickory Park, so we did go ahead and order one, you saw it in the bills of the evening, when that comes in, that'll be installed at the Hickory Park. Okay. We just had our Park Day, and my hats off to the BBCA for an outstanding job organizing, promoting, just outstanding. What a great day. Brought the community together for a lot of activities. And we were happy that we were able to get our eight new benches installed in the park and the concrete under that front pavilion. Park never looked better than it did this year, so I'm very proud of our tree park committee, of all our employees, again, the BBCA for the fine job they continue to do over and over. We were able to take advantage of the intern that the town of Virgin has acquired from Cornell Asset Management. He will be, uh, going over, developing a plan for our roads. He'll actually examine all our roads and rate them, at what condition they're in, and kind of what long, long term, short term, what should be done with all our roads, and the, I'm thankful to the town, they're actually paying for the, for his services, but the length of time that he's gonna be here, they felt that he would also be able to do the village streets, so I want to thank the town board.
That's nice.
For assisting us with that.
Is this a recommendation of, like, repave versus oil and stone, that type of thing?
Yes, yes, and, yeah. You know, what's, what's too far gone, and what, what kind of treatment? They would feel would be the most appropriate.
When does that happen, do you know?
Uh, he's doing the town now.
Okay.
So as soon as he's done doing the town.
Okay, so soon then?
Yes.
Okay.
Nortera, I'm thrilled to say we finally got a fifty-year lease signed, signed lease. It's probably been since twenty twelve that we haven't had a lease, and we, we just got, got it signed, so we're locked in now for fifty-year lease for the property on Church Street, which houses our electric facilities and the substation. So thanks to Nortera for seeing, getting that fifty-year lease.
That still includes the five hundred hours of work time?
Uh, it includes up to five thousand dollars a year.
There was a five there sometimes, okay, five thousand a year.
Yeah.
Of electrical assistance, right?
There was no mention in the lease of a carryover.
Okay.
Typically, we go there maybe once, twice a season with our electric when they have a problem, so.
Okay.
I think they're trying to be a good neighbor with us, and we're trying to be good neighbors with them, and.
Good.
Work together, so.
Good, good.
Congratulations.
Yeah. I attended the semi-annual NIPo and the MEWA meetings along with Courtney in Syracuse, May twenty-first, twenty-second, and one of the big things to come out of those meetings was that NIPA, the New York Power Authority, has informed the municipals that their rates are going to increase as of January twenty twenty-five. Their last increase was eleven years ago, and the rate change scenarios will be brought to the MEWA for discussion, and NIPA will be undergoing a, a one billion dollar Niagara power project upgrade, so that's why they're saying that they need the rate change to cover the cost. So as of right now, we don't know the overall impact of that raise, but like I say, when they come back with their scenarios to the MEWA, we'll, we'll have meetings and it'll all be explained. And the IEEP members, who are the Independent Energy Efficiency Program members, who, of which we are not a member of, we have our own Energy Efficiency Program here, BEEP, which Courtney oversees with Renee, they do a spectacular job running that. They save the village a lot of money. When we were a member of IEEP, we were paying administration fees, and we don't want to have to do that, and they do that in-house, and remarkable job. And they are, they are proposing though, a, going from a one-mill adder to a two-mill adder for energy efficiency from all these systems who are members of the IEEP. That is pending Public Service Commission approval. We here at the village are currently collecting one mill from our customers, and one mill is one-tenth of one cent, just so you know what a one-mill is, okay? So we're kind of anxious to see how the Public Service Commission's gonna rule on that, and.
So we're collecting one-tenth of one cent on every person, around every?
Every kilowatt hour.
Okay.
So would the public service be involved in the first one here, the, the increase that they're, they're talking about up above, the item up?
From one to two.
Good.
The Public Service Commissioner would have to approve that.
Okay.
And then, I'm not, I don't believe, unless the state mandated, and it was at two percent, you know, up to two, then we would have to change ours, but as of right now, we would leave ours at one mill.
So I guess the question was, Joe, is there an oversight committee that has to approve the, the NIPA increase from?
Yeah, that was, that was, I guess that was what I meant.
From, what are they doing, that the rates are going to increase in January twenty twenty-five? Is there an oversight that approves that, or is this just?
That would be federal, that would be FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
So they don't have to get a parole, they just think the rates are?
They would come back with a scenario, and if they're, they're, typically what they do is they shoot high.
Right.
And then we would, our MEWA lawyers get involved and say, no, 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 it's too much, so then they go to litigation and they, they settle on.
A percentage.
On a percentage.
Okay. So that's not part of a public service organization to oversee that, that's like above that?
That's above, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. At the conference, we learned of federal funding, which NIPA is overseeing. It's the IIJA grant funding, and we have been in contact with their reps to start an application in hopes of obtaining grant funding for our substation. So we're in the very preliminary stage of that, and we'll be working on that, and hopefully, you know, if we can get some more fund, grant funding for, to offset the cost, then it's gonna hugely be a huge benefit to the village.
Does that grant writer, the five thousand dollar grant writer, cover all different grants?
They have their own grant writers at NIPA, they're gonna be overseeing that.
Yeah, so they're, it's, it's, it was a great thing to find out, because they have a, we talked to, we had a meeting with them, and the grant writer's been doing it for thirty years, so she has a lot of experience. There's two programs, two separate programs that we qualify for both of those programs through the federal league, on top of the CFA grant that we applied for last, last month, so that's three grants, we have to get one for the substation, and they are all, they, they don't, they don't disqualify each themselves, so we could possibly get.
Three?
Three, three grants. For, and get money for all that, or, you know, so we have more opportunities to get funding, so if we don't get one, we might get another, but it'd be fantastic, we have the jackpot, got money for all three programs, and had a big, that substation paid for.
Great.
That would be nice.
Okay, another thing that came out of the meetings was the renewable energy credits, they're called RECs. They're on everyone's electric bills. You'll see RECs and ZECs. The RECs are renewable energy credits, and the ZECs are zero emission credits. They're gonna stop collecting the RECs, the state is, renewable energy credits, they've stockpiled so much money now that they can't use it all, they haven't got enough contractors out there to take the contracts to use the money, so for the time being, even for go, collecting any more money, but rest assured, they will be coming back, and in years to come, they will be going up and up and up.
Do you know how much we pay right now on that, Colonel? Roughly, is it cents, dollars?
It's always dollars, thousands of dollars.
Wow, just so they can put up solar front, so.
Pretty much. It's, it's ridiculous. It's a, it's a, like a percentage, or like, like the IEP or whatever, it's a, so many mills, it's sort of more power used, the more you pay in.
Okay. Okay. Another thing I found interesting, they were talking about the electric bus propositions are failing to pass at many of the school budget votes, which I'm not surprised. The cost of these buses is phenomenal, and the charging stations aren't available, the power's not available to even charge these buses, so I think the state, little by little, they're starting to see the light here and say, hey, so. And another thing that came out of the meeting was, they, they, the governor shut down Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant outside of New York City. And in so doing, we lost, I think, two thousand megawatts of power capacity that that plant was producing, so now it's put more of a burden on the fossil fuel plant and mainly the gas, natural gas generation. That's, most of the generation now is gas, but now, now, trying to make up the shortfall, they're saying, if they have a really bad cold winter, they don't have the gas line, pipeline, infrastructure in the eastern part of the state to deliver enough gas to keep the generation flowing, so.
So why did they shut it down?
Because they don't, because the governor doesn't like nuclear power plants outside of New York City.
Should I just down here?
It was.
Same with the coal.
It was.
They shut their power plant down up there.
Okay.
So now they?
That's right, it was, it was. That's right. It was Tomo that started the process.
It was too close to New York City and they were worried if there was a meltdown. So...
I think before long, they will start looking at nuclear again for generation. So, that's all I got.
No carbon emissions and nuclear.
Yeah.
Hi Courtney.
All right, so I'll have my report there. Just a few things that I want to touch on. And I ordered the Bobcat. That was in the budget. And today, I also ordered the Zero Turn. The guy's picked out a X mark. See how that works out.
What brand Bobcat? You know another Bobcat or...
Oh, it was a... Oh, the Bobcat, yes.
It's for skid steer.
Yes, the Bobcat. I ordered one that was a little bit bigger than the current one we have because the totes that Chris picks up and moves with little chemicals are so heavy that he barely gets it off the ground and just kind of sort of just get it sliding. So the one this one picks up a little bit more so he might be able to actually get it off the ground and move it and drive it. I wanted to bring up the possibility of creating a reserve for the equipment instead of just earmarking it. That's not something, I said before, that's not something I really like to do. I like to keep the money open and free for if something comes up. But in this case, where I think for equipment, it'd be better to have a reserve and put that money in there and have that money dedicated. So if you're okay with that, then I'd like to move forward. I have a sample.
How would they resolution?
But what other impact is there to do that on other person?
Really, there's not any impact. So right now, we just have a lot of money in an unappropriated fund balance. So we would just take some money out of there and put it in a reserve. So that is basically a lockbox where, you know, it can't be touched unless it's for equipment.
Is the unappropriated reserve the 750 you were talking about?
Well, the unappropriated fund balance is just basically money. Money is not... It's basically money in a savings account, I guess is the best way to say it. It's just money that's there with no reserve or...
How much is it?
Right now, if you look at the... In the very back of your packet, not your packet, but the information I gave you is, I guess, so across... So if you look at the very top line, the cash. So we have over $900,000, almost a million dollars in cash in the general fund. So not all of that is unappropriated, but majority is. So yes, we have quite a bit there and because we have so much, it would...
So you're looking at taking some of that, putting it into a reserve? And what should we looking at doing?
So we budgeted 50 this year and 50 last year for reserve and I believe 10,000 previous year. So we could start with 110 or more if you wanted to. And then whatever we don't use, if we don't use all the money as budget this year, we could put that money in there as well. So over the course of time, it can build up. My idea for this is so we could build the fund balance, the reserve funds up so that we buy, we'll be purchasing mostly the equipment, the smaller equipment, out of this reserve instead of the budget. And that way, we can budget for the same amount almost every single year. And that makes the budget steady so we can project out what our costs are going to be and, you know, it keeps going to control on expenses. Feel like, you know, down the road, it's less likely we'll have to increase taxes because all of a sudden, you know, before we had, okay, we had to have a new truck, but those 450s and 550s were over $100,000. So all of a sudden, we have to do... We had to buy this piece of equipment this year so we can't do road work or we can't do sidewalks or... And then the next year, we have to, you know, change it all around where we're doing all this. You know, we have to do road work to catch up because we didn't do that. So my intention for the budget has always been be as consistent year to year to year as possible. So the budgets are very, very similar across the way, so... That's my thought.
So what type of equipment? Talking like lawn tractor stuff or cutting grass? You talking about cars, trucks?
Um, right, yeah. So the RTVs, the Bobcats. We could do the mowers, but mowers are easy to put through the general fund.
So kind of middle...
Loader, yes.
Equipment, not necessarily the loader and stuff?
That's right. That's right. And like the dump truck, I mean, we just got that so that's probably 10, 15 years before we replace it. But that would be too big of an item for us to buy out of reserve. But for all the other things, we can put money away and then do that.
So when you say start with the 110, that's because you had put aside 50, 50 and 10 that they didn't use?
We put it, in the budget. We budgeted for, to put money in an equipment fund. So instead of just having it unappropriated, I just want to put it in the reserve so it's locked in and we can't use it for anything else.
So the equipment fund basically is the same thing with the reserve kind of locks it only for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the budget already, but if something comes up, it gets moved to somewhere else?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause then that makes us weak down the road if we need it.
That makes sense.
So it makes sense to me, yeah. Do we, do you have like a five-year, "We've spent this much on equipment" type?
Yeah, so...
What do we, a year?
Yeah, what's a track record and something like that?
Well, it's different every year because it depends on what we're purchasing. So I have a spreadsheet of each piece of equipment and we put in place a real quick replacement plan. So yeah, so every, say, five years, we replace the 450 or five years, we replace the 550. Every two years, we replace the RTVs and the Bobcats, skid steers and the lawn mowers. The bigger equipment like loader. I think it's the five or 10. I can't remember for the loader and the mini, but...
Probably five.
Yeah. Because when we buy things, we buy it on state bid and it's actually, it's basically our cost. So we've, we don't, we're not, we can't make money on these kind of things. We can't, you know, turn around and sell it in the next year to just have a profit. That's illegal, but... So with the RTV, the last RTV we sold, it actually was just a tad bit more than we bought it for. We got back. So if we keep, generally with the RTVs and the Bobcats, we sell them every two years and it's about a $2,000 or $3,000 difference between the purchase and the sale. So we had to keep it for two years and, you know, it costs us $2,000 to $3,000. So there's no maintenance. There's almost no oil changes. Like there's nothing, so that reduces the cost. So, I mean, so what I really wanted to do, and it's hard, but so taking into account, say, the Bobcat where it's, say, $3,000 for two years. It's $1,500 per year to own. My thought would be to try to budget for every single piece of equipment just like that and put that in a budget. So we budget for each piece of equipment, how much it costs every single year and we put that money into the reserve. So then, when it comes time to buy stuff, it's there and it just comes out of there. So again, just steady. We know exactly where it costs us.
That's good.
So then, when surplus equipment gets sold, would that money end up back into the equipment reserve fund? Or how does that work?
So it was, we still budget the way we do now. So there'd be in revenue, there'd be the sale equipment and then in central garage equipment, there'd be the cost of the expense. So the difference between the two, that would come out of the reserve. Then we put a line item in revenue for that amount.
And it's a great idea.
Yeah.
You have a public hearing to do it?
So I'm always over cautious with these things. So we do not need, officially, we do not need a public hearing. We can have a public hearing, but some of you guys... So the mandatory is a, so it's... What's it called? It's... I'm struggling on the correct term. I'm just referring. It's a permissive referendum, but I can't... It requires a permissive referendum anyway. There's a specific term for that, so... But it is, we have to have a permissive referendum. So we pass a resolution and that resolution would be on hold for 30 days and that gives people time to come in with a petition to force a vote on the resolution. So at the end of 30 days, if there's, nobody objects, then it just goes into law.
And we would get publicized that they can see that?
Yep, so we would publicize it just like we would an election. So it would go in the newspaper and then workplaces advertised around the village. So here, the post office, library and the information board and then out there. And I'd put it on the website.
I'm wondering if we want to start with 50 as opposed to the 110? I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if it's, if that makes sense to start at the 50 point and then continue to go up? Or should we jump right in and go?
I like that, but what would happen to the 60 that's already there? Cause we already...
There's money already.
Cause we have, we have the 110, right?
Yeah.
So what happens to the other 60, I guess?
Another point here. I'm going to see the $100,000 go in. That fund balance is pretty high right now. The state doesn't like to see it that high.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if we drop it down, then we're near the ballpark where we should be again. Once it's in that account, then it's allocated. It's allocated and, yeah, it's not far.
Okay.
Bail, so I would recommend the $100,000.
And then the idea would be then you add to it every year a certain amount? Or a vote that we vote on? Or a same amount every year?
At the budget time, it would be voted on.
Okay.
So every year, the board would decide how much to put in there?
The last two years, we done 50.
So do you need now to proceed? Do you need...
I, so I have a sample here. This is actually one that we passed in 2012. It was...
Do we have that, Courtney?
No, I don't have it here. I just pulled it up at the last minute, but... They created three separate reserves, about $30,000 in each reserve. One for sewer, one for electric, one for general.
Who's they?
The village board.
Okay.
The board that's... And that was to fund a piece of equipment. And it was only, it was only established and placed for four months. And then when a piece of equipment came in, they paid for it and closed the fund, so...
But ours would be ongoing?
Right, yeah. So I mean, if you want to...
So that's just an example of what you posted to others?
So that would be what, basically what the resolution would be. It looked similar to that one.
They're establishing a reserve account, basically, for a short period of time where you would, here would be perpetuity that this continued on. So, yeah. I guess this was kind of like a stopgap that he needed money right away and so... Okay.
So you want to vote on a permissive referendum?
You can... I don't know if you need a vote because I will do a resolution and present it to the board next time and you can vote if you want to proceed or not.
Okay.
So that's the resolution.
Very good.
Okay, just one more. Any negatives to that at all? I mean, can you think, I'm trying to think of anything negative to it. Are you...
Really, it's like, it's what I've always been worried about is, you know, if there's trouble somewhere else and we can't use that money for anything, so... But it's not like we can never use it. We can take, we can take it out and do something else with it, but it, we have to go through some steps, which is another permissive referendum to close it out and...
So it's not a counter.
Right.
Low risk, right? Cause you're getting a hundred grand on something or other.
Yeah, it'll 100% be used.
It's starting to collect the interest, still the pool, the village pool of money.
A lot of municipalities have people who reserve funds like that. So just for this.
Very nice. What else you got, Courtney?
Oh, yeah. I, you guys might have noticed, but the transfer from Casella to Waste Management didn't go very well the first week. Had quite a lot of complaints. Both companies admit that it did not go well. Waste Management was very apologetic. They said that it was a 5 out of 10 on their scale. And...
50% discount.
Right. They, whoever established, I mean, they're all computerized and kind of robotic in the way they have to do things. And whoever created the route, created it numerically instead of go down one side of the road and go back the other. So it took all day.
They asked me directions. They stopped in the garbage truck. "Do you know how to get down?" I was like, "Yeah, you have to go up." You know, they didn't know where they were. So that didn't help.
They're not going to have any streets.
Recycling truck and the garbage truck were both stopped in front of my house that morning and they were, one guy was asking, "How are you doing this? Which way are you going?"
The guy's probably been forbidden in our village, you know?
It didn't go well, but I think yesterday went a lot better. The route manager came in and said he felt like it went a lot better, but they're still tweaking it. Shows it'll be better next week. Casella wasn't very good either. They took a long time, almost a week, to get the totes. Some of them, they missed. Some people forgot to put it out or took it back too soon. We've been going around and picking those up as we see them and throwing them out. With that, taxes are, we're in the middle of tax season and it's, the last few days, we've gotten a lot of money. So it's come in really, really well. So that's it for me.
You log out a copy of Gary, our CEO/CEO's report?
Yep.
Looks like with spring and summer upon us, he's, the number of firmances lining up, so he's kind of busy.
Oh, yes, the new house on Lee Brice Street. All of a sudden, there's just this big blue house there.
Yeah, it's right behind Bob Bausch's house. It's like, God, he's looking right at it. Cause I know he owns like eight acres back there. And I said, "Did you allow somebody to build there?" He said, "I didn't own that." Oh my God, and it's looking right at his backyard. I'm mad. It's a house. It's Wallace or somebody from Churchville, I think he said.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big house, geez.
Very good.
Courtney, do we have to okay that soon?
Yes. Number two.
All right. Okay, any questions on the CEO's, EEO's report? If not, I'll ask for a motion to accept the officer's reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the officer's reports.
Your second? All in favor? Trustee concerns, where's that?
I feel like these are not concerned, but same thing where I'm interested in a tour. We could schedule a tour.
Yeah, we got that on.
On that time. And then just the Munger Street drainage, or maybe this intern, when he analyzes the streets, that'll be on his list. Munger Street. See, there's a driveway permit for fourteen Munger Street, and it seems like if the street was drained, I see might not have a problem.
I'll, I'll meet with him and bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No concerns, just praise to the village guys for, you know, the flags, the military representation, the parties. Wonderful job. In front of the carriage house, there was a grate, Joe, that was twisted, you know, those little square drainage grates? Twisted up. And I tried to walk on the dog, tried to get it down, and it's still been moved. But I didn't know if the guys saw that or someone.
In front of the carriage house?
Right in front of the carriage house.
And the owner said, you have to.
Is it still?
Courtney, you'll have the guy look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, something, somebody can trip on it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely. That was a, really.
Okay, anything else?
I reached out to Gary Sisery about getting together for some zoning stuff. And he said, anytime. So, I hadn't connected because of our vacation stuff, but we're planning on getting together. And I noticed the house on nineteen here, they're doing some grass cutting and some rehab. So, we're hoping that maybe he's getting a word that, yeah, something's going to happen there, so.
Happy to see the owner, a couple of doors down, has been doing work on the front of his building. Scraping and putting the wood in, so, so that's, you know, thanks to him for.
They built some laffles that were opening up down there, I heard.
And then I briefly talked with Courtney about, I know it's not going to be Oxbow that we're dealing with there. And it's another agency that's building, buying land and building there. I'm wondering if we could get information from Oxbow on what kind of stuff they're going to be discharging into the sewage system. I'm assuming that's our sewage system there. Okay, so, because if it's oils and things, we don't know what's going into that. And if it's going to be something detrimental to, you know, the, the system, it'd be nice to know what that, that discharge is going to be.
Yeah, and that is definitely something to be required before they.
Do they have to do like environmental, put a pre-treatment system in? So, that's my concern about that whole big thing, because, you know, I mean, there's a lot of grease and oils there, so.
That just happened at Stamp. They put a halt on that.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's it.
I think our engineer, Eric Weiss, with CPL, will take care of that, so.
What's the name of the organization that's?
That's GE Virgin Own LLC.
Okay, but they're not from Virgin, right?
No.
So, Oxbow's not going up there?
So, Oxbow is, it's just.
They're doing it under the LLC?
An LLC is.
Just to kind of, I got it.
Yeah, so they're going to own it, build it, and then lease it to Oxbow. So, it's still going to be Oxbow, it's just.
Right, so apparently that's how Liberty Pump is too.
Their property's under a different.
Who knew? Some tax incentives there somehow.
So, yeah, I would think, you know, whatever, the information's going to have to come from Oxbow as far as what their discharge is and stuff.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all, I got it.
The email I received said that they were hoping to start breaking ground in August.
Oh, great.
Very good. And how do we stand with putting a new truck on in for electric?
We're, well, our substation upgrade, our lines already go up there. We've got a bid opening this Friday for some more of the substation equipment. So, we'll see how that comes out and we're moving along.
Good, very good.
We'll have to get the bid and the board will have to approve it and get it on order as soon as possible, because some of the stuff's fifty-seven weeks out. And, you know, we're going to be fighting them, because they're going to be building a building, and they're going to want power when it's, when it's done, so.
I heard that Dollar General was kind of on the negative side there, because the, the town put some restrictions on the architecture. They didn't want it looking like a boxy thing like they wanted Byron in Churchville. And so, I don't know if they went back to the drawing board or if they just gave it up.
I think they pulled the plug on it from what I heard.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was saying.
I haven't heard.
So, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. You don't need three of them within four miles.
I don't know if you've ever been in that one in Byron?
Oh, yeah.
That is the most well organized and neatest one I've ever been in.
It is very nicely, very nicely done. But I think they don't like the appearance of the block, you know.
It's like a pole barn.
At least the one in Byron does have a better facade to it. It looks a little bit more like, you know.
Compared to what was there before, it's a.
Improvement, absolutely. I think they would be an improvement, yeah.
Looks good. Okay, anything else, Bob?
Nothing, that's it for me.
Todd?
I was just going to mention that the grate in the sidewalk that Mike mentioned. Other than that, you know, guys are doing a great job for the village. You know, we're blessed to have as much work done by two guys as what we should get done here.
They were blowing sidewalks off this morning, and wow, looks nice. Really looks good.
Okay, good. We'll pass that on to Courtney.
Absolutely.
All right. Under new business, designate equipment as surplus. Courtney, what surplus equipment are you proposing?
My, it's in your pack, I did add one, addition one on there, I forgot. So, the two thousand nine International Digger Dare, we have the new one in, so that we don't need this one. The nineteen eighty-four Sewer Jetter, obviously it's older than dirt, hasn't really worked in a long time. And, you know, we're not going to put the money into it that we require to keep on going. And again, it's thirty years old, forty, forty years old.
You will sell that, you'll just scrap it?
Uh, we'll put it up for sale, see what happens.
Be surprised, we'll be able to buy.
Oh, really?
Somebody might need parts off of it.
It's a diesel engine, isn't it, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a diesel engine, so somebody might want it just for the engine and the pump. We'll see. And then the last thing, and I forgot to put it on the packet I sent you guys, Monday is the twenty twenty-one Bobcat. So, I ordered that and I'll win the, the zero turn, the Gravely Zero Turn mower. Those are one of those four things, the, so, yeah.
Because you ordered a new twenty twenty-four mower, so then you'll sell this twenty twenty-four?
We buy, we have two mowers, we buy one every year, so they, they're two years old, so we sell them. Usually the same with Bobcats, so that way we're only buying one of those each year.
So, what do you need, Courtney?
Um, so I need a motion.
Need a motion to?
Designate as surplus. It's required by law for us to sell it.
I don't want to, it doesn't make the four equipments, parts listed here as surplus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next thing is our manhole restoration project bid. We received only one bid. I believe it's to restore, what, twelve, Courtney?
Yes, twelve.
Twelve manholes. These are the ones that they've identified as being a lot of infiltration. Unfortunately, two of them are in my yard. But they, they need to be taken care of. There's a lot of water being, you know, going into those and ends up in our sewer plant, so we need to get a handle on this infiltration. And this, this is the only bid that we received to do the work to rehabilitate those manholes, so.
How often does it happen?
What's that, these?
Infiltration?
Oh, it's, it could be twenty years, you know, it, it depends.
And are the twelve manholes, all the manholes in the village, or is there just like certain?
No, there's a lot, there's a lot more than that.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, just pick twelve?
These are the twelve they picked, I think a lot of them are along the creek, mini creek.
So, this is when the creek rises, they get infiltration into those?
Yeah.
So, they're sleeving them, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, the problem they've got, Bob, they already have sleeves, and I think most of them have sleeves. So, they have to actually tear some of the sleeve out to see what's actually going on behind it, to see if they can repair behind it without pulling the whole sleeve out.
Sure.
So, until they really get into it, they, they really don't even know what, what they're getting into. They have an idea, but.
Yeah, so is this likely to go up or is their bid is their bid? I mean, if they find.
Well, that's, I believe their bid is their bid. We have so much money and that's all we have.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We're frightened saying that, Courtney. And so, we have so much money and that's it.
What if they come back and say, well, we can do ten instead of twelve for the price? I mean, is that something that may happen?
It's, it's possible, depending on how much damage they find when they look out. The end result is that they, they want to coat the inside with PVC type of material, make a big, a hole tight on the inside.
Okay.
I mean, you ever see how they coat water lines? Basically, they put a sleeve in there and then they inject like concrete or whatever. I mean, that's basically the idea from, I believe, that I have.
Yeah, with sewer lines too, they sleeve them right there.
Yeah, but this will be just bigger and be of a PVC type of material.
That's good.
That's the idea.
Do you have any idea, is this a high bid? Do we know? I mean, has this been done anywhere else?
Yeah, so CPL have used them, this company before to do this.
What kind of timeframe are we looking, like this year, next year?
This fall, I believe, Courtney.
Right.
Okay. But he said they wanted to start this fall.
Looked at that very. Can they work if we have a high water condition though? I mean, you know, I mean, if the creek is high or something, are they able to get in there? Or do they have to wait until it goes down?
Yeah, I don't know if they can do it with the water flowing. It's like steel.
Yeah.
Or copper, or something.
Yeah, it's like steel. Spray the whole area.
Looks good. Okay, so is there a motion to accept these, the bid?
I make a motion to accept the manhole rehabilitation bid.
Now, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do have one question I want to leave in that bid. What does it mean when it says alternate bids, four thousand? It's on this, it's on that.
Oh.
Yeah. There, there was, when they submitted their bid, there was this bid and then two alternatives or.
Oh, that's the new four foot possible manhole. So, that's kind of like their contingency.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, if something, if something happens.
So, are we okay in the two twelve then? Is that basically what we're doing? Same yet, it's a two twelve?
Yes.
Okay, next thing on here is the, is our building, near the Tully Building. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Approval of some new members to our fire department.
So, what would?
Which is always a good thing.
Yeah.
What would be a reason we would not promote someone that they suggested?
If you knew, if you knew something on background, someone, they do background checks on all their applicants. But say, you say you knew something personally that you wanted to say, you know.
Not sure about this guy.
Yeah, I don't know. It's just a requirement, kind of thing.
It's nice to see people volunteering.
Yeah.
I'm getting a quick. Think that's a strokey in Cub Scouts when it was.
And is it, it says Virgin Fire Department, so that's shared between the village and the town?
Well, it's actually a village fire department. That's how they're set up as a village fire department. That's why all their applicants have to be okay by our board.
But the town does give money.
But, oh, yeah, the town gives money, Rida gives money.
It's, it's a new thing, yeah.
Yeah, they collect.
They collect from money.
For fire service, you know.
So, it's a village fire department? That's interesting.
On paper, they're, they're just another department of the village, like the sewer, sewer, electric, P W. Other, other.
That's, I was wondering, is it because of where they located that, no?
Other municipalities, all their, the, the fire departments, like, like, still completely as part of their, their, so they pay their bills, they pay, they buy pursuit of equipment. By a long time ago, they just let them go on their own and just pay them and they do their thing. They don't have to worry about it. The old field is, yeah, is.
Does that mean they have their own board too?
Yes. I attend their meetings pretty much every month. I go to their meeting. And I am so amazed at the work they do there, the dedication. It's not a notch. They give a full report at every meeting. We're so fortunate to have, have that fire department here.
What is Eric's role now, Eric Weiss?
He was president.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's going to stay in that position or not, because he's so busy with work, but he was at the last meeting.
Okay, that's good.
He does a great job there.
Yep. So, we need approval for these four?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the four members of the new, new members of the Virgin Fire Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary? Okay, now we're on the Tully Building. We're up, I, I know myself and Courtney and even the girls in the office here, we've been looking at the front of this building, saying, boy, it looks pretty beat, okay, it's just.
This building we're in right now?
Yeah, the front. It's all, it's all just brown and it's starting to fade with the sun on it. We thought it'd be nice to see about getting the front of the building painted. With everything else downtown looking so nice now, and you with our neighbor two doors down, trying to make kids look a little better now. We, we just wanted to bring forth, you know, come forth with, you know, possibly painting the front of this building. I mean, we have money in our budget for buildings. I guess we'd like to get, go out and see, get some quotes, see what it's going to cost. And, you know, then we come back to the board.
It's just the front, it's not all the way?
No, well, it's mainly the front we're looking at.
I always think it looks so nice when I drive by. I always think, oh, yes, it could, whoever.
Yeah, I feel like closely it's starting to get pretty beat up. And the parts that are metal flashing, they painted metal flashing, that's all coming off. There's inserts underneath the windows of wood, and those are all, they're not cracked and they're coming apart. So, just turn them up a little more compared to all the other ones.
Yes, a little more contrast rather than just all brown.
It's hard to get bids, I guess, right?
Yeah.
You'll send it out for a bid, is that how it works?
We'll get quotes.
We'll get some quotes.
See how much it's going to cost. Then we might have to put it up for bid.
Okay.
And who would pick colors if you wanted, if you wanted to change it? Because I think it looks, the colors, I like the color scheme.
Well, there, isn't there a scheme that, because it's a historical district, they have to maintain?
Yeah, historical colors. Yes, you're correct.
You can certainly.
But you're saying brown, but it looks kind of gray to me, or whatever, it looks good, I think it looks good. Not saying it doesn't need repairs or maintenance, I just like the colors.
But I think there's colors we could pick from, right?
Yeah, you're correct, there's a historical palette you can pick from, colors.
Yeah, so that you don't get some, you know, bright, lime colors.
Okay, okay.
Sounds good.
Next thing is the grant writer. As you know, we received five thousand dollars from Genesee County for a grant writer. They provided this service a year ago, and they've done it again this fiscal, so we've taken advantage of that five thousand dollar grant. I, the, the question was, are there other grants out there rather than a park grant that we might be able to go for? I've called, I've talked to Eric Weiss, see if there's anything we could do with our sewers. And he said that we would have to document, like I said, I'd like to start replacing subject tanks. But he said we would have to start documenting that now, taking pictures as we go this year and get a track record of of the shape that they're in before we can actually go through a grant, so that would be a year away. So, we've told Chris, our wastewater treatment operator, to, when he's pumping tanks, take pictures of the tanks. So, we, we kind of get a, you know, feel for the condition of these tanks. So, that, that was out. And I talked to Labella Associates and asked if there might be anything for roads or for sidewalks. And he said, no, there's, there's nothing there, so.
About drainage on, on Munger, I mean, that'd be a great project to get some funding for.
Well, there again, we would have to tear the road all out.
Reconstruction.
I did put a call into our engineer to give me a ballpark figure of what it would cost to do that from Punch Street up to where the, the schoolhouse. So, we're waiting to see what that is, but. So, parks, the park grant is still available and do I wish there was something else we could go for? To be honest, yes, I do wish, I wish it was something we could write a grant and possibly take advantage of. But it looks like the park grant is, is what is available, that the village might be able to take advantage of. It's a very competitive grant, I'll be honest. But we went for that grant last year and. But we went for that grant last year, and we did not receive it. The town also went in for it, for Robbinsburg Park, and they were also denied. So our thought was to try and have a different grant writer, Labella Associates, write the grant this time. And, and it's changed already in a year of the needs for that park already, you know. So we've come up with some new items that we feel would be great there.
How much do they charge for grant writing? Is that five thousand covered?
Yes, that covers the whole, that's their fee, five thousand dollars.
Will they help with multiple grants, if we found more grant opportunities?
Up to five thousand dollars.
Up to five thousand.
And this one is gonna cost five thousand dollars. So after this one, we're done. Or unless, unless you're interested in writing grants, I mean, you mentioned it before, that if there's an opportunity to write a grant, I don't know, that would be a possibility. Now, I don't need to throw in your question.
Yeah, no, I know, no, I have some experience with submitting grants. Not for municipalities, of course, but I'm not sure about the writing of each of the segments of them.
Well, like I said, I've checked with two engineering firms, and there's just not a lot out there right now that we can, I feel we can go for.
If we don't use it, we lose it, right? For this year?
Yeah, we already were awarded it from county, because we told them we were gonna do a grant.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of...
So we're giving five thousand, no matter?
Yeah, let's...
Good. That's good.
Okay, so is there a motion to have Labella Associates do our, submit our park grant?
Yeah, I make a motion to have Labella do the park grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Next thing is the community garden. And I showed these, kind of what it looks like. That's what it looks like right now.
Be a nice dog park.
You can, you can see, you can't even see the garden boxes anymore, right? The people who have garden boxes, it's their responsibility to, you know, end of the year, clean them out, and then prepare them. But over the course of the existence of that thing, every year, we've had to go in there and clean them all out for people, and then we clean them all out. And people say, "Oh yeah, I sign up," so they sign up, and then there's only four of the eighteen plots that are actually being used. Everything else are just six-foot tall boulders.
So do people rent them, or how are they gonna do it?
They're twenty-five dollars a plot.
For the season, not per month, or?
For six months.
Summer, whatever.
And do you guys water them too?
They're watered there.
In the beginning, there was a lot of people that took advantage of it, but it kind of wore off, you know, it kind of dwindled down.
And is there like a sharing of crowds?
Everybody's got their own little thing there, and plant which one.
Like five by eight.
So what would be the reason they would want to do this here instead of in their own yard?
I don't know.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
So why do we have it? That's, I guess, what I'm getting at.
It was just something that happened years ago.
Because it was a neat thing to get people together?
Originally, Chris, it was Chris Vay's idea, and he will, he talks about it all the time, because his idea was to have it up at the sewer plant, right? Because there is the compost up there, there's the rich soil, there's water, the effort for the plant, for the sewer plant that is actually usable. So it would be a way to use all those things and to have, and give people a place to garden. But then Gary came, who was the VP supervisor, and the board said, "Okay," and he, you know, built that with the fence and everything. So it kind of got way away from what Chris's vision was of something very simple out back there. And then it became here, and then it just kind of, you know, and then there's all this work, because there's a fence, and there's all the bushes all the way around it, so we've got to weed the beds, and go inside and mow in between the plots all the time. There's the water, the water line, they, they, some places, the water line's underground, some places it's not. So it soaks all the time.
If they wanted to continue with it, they could do it up there, potentially?
I don't, I mean, that's up to, that's up to the board, but I...
No, I'm just saying, if they started there, if somebody really, really, you know, you say, "Well, you can continue, you know, up where they started," if that's possible.
Personally, I wouldn't even want them behind there doing it. You got the liability of falling in a...
Yeah, that's true.
We'd chuckle back there, breaking our leg.
You gotta bring water and all that stuff.
It's costing us about a good thousand dollars a year, man and labor to run that thing.
It's not even our property, right?
It is now, we got a lease on it now. It's a couple of weeks ago. I have gotten a complaint from across the street. The neighbor called me, emailed me, and I talked to her on the phone, she's complaining about looking at that. She wants something done about it. So I was gonna bring it on the agenda to bring to the board tonight.
What would be involved in disassembling it? I mean, how difficult would they be? Are there blocks, wood, is it timbers, what's?
The blocks are just stacked, they're just stacked year together.
Just be a collection?
Scooping it all up?
Well, depends on, if we want to try to save those blocks. If we don't want to save the blocks, they can go in with a clam bucket up the lower, and just go grab, dump it, grab it, dump it, grab it, dump it, and then, you know, they may go through that really fast. But the fence, you know, they'll have to be a little more careful if you can save the fence. The blocks and stuff, if we just get rid of the blocks, it should go pretty fast. And around the outside, where it's all grown up, we can use the mini with the flail mower, not, not all down for now.
Is there anybody in there currently renting?
No.
No.
There was three or four people we had who came in and asked if we couldn't do it this year.
Yeah. So it's totally empty?
Yeah.
They done three or four people?
No, no, right, nobody, yeah, we didn't, we told everybody no, because Joe put it in the news.
Yeah, I put it months and months ago, months. I didn't want interest, because if I didn't get enough interest in it, I was gonna close it down. Because I, we cashed five thousand dollars a year in labor. Two guys, we've got enough, our hands full with two guys here as it is, and we're still trying to maintain something like that. I, a community, or Genesee justice people, and you're trying to weed, you know, I get them, trying to get them in there to try to catch up on it.
And the community action day case.
Community action day, and also, yeah, I felt bad for the kids having to go in there. It was Courtney's idea.
So what, so what do you, what do we propose?
I propose we just disassemble it, and get it out of there, put it back to grass seed, how it was before.
Save the fencing.
Save the fencing, possibly sell the blocks, I've seen them on auctions. I mean, you can stack them out of pallet, and sell them, sell them, you know, get what we can out of them.
Even if you offered them to village residents, they might come over and take a few if you wanted them, right?
Yeah. Some people need a little break wall or something, where, you know, they need to hold something back, who knows?
I'm always looking for a random block.
Drop some reroute through them to...
Not a hundred of them, but...
We'll have them delivered. So I'd say if there's somebody in there right now, I'd say take it down.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I'm gonna ask for a motion on this, that we disassemble this, because it is part of infrastructure of the village.
And what, what's, let me just ask, what's gonna happen, nothing changes with the lease, right?
No.
That's incorporated in the area that we're leasing?
Within the property.
So we can still use it for something else, possibly?
Yeah.
Future?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I mean, you know, Mike mentioned like a dog, something, a dog park or something, it'd be nice. But I'm not saying it goes now, but...
Oh, I'm with you on a dog park idea.
That's for the future, like a joke.
Viable liability, but still.
Yeah, yeah.
Still would be nice.
Yeah. Can't keep people to pick up their dog feces on the sidewalks, much less, whatever, that's another date.
Yeah.
Motion to dismantle this community garden?
I'll make a motion to dismantle the community garden.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? I did reach out to the sheriff's department, it's not out here, but I did reach out, waiting for a call back from Sergeant Hale, I believe his name is. And he hasn't called me back yet. So I told him, you know, "It's time to have another meeting here, face to face." And I'm waiting to hear back from him, to tell him about the hot spots in the village here that seem to be, you know, the worst.
I've seen more around lately, these last few weeks.
I've been hearing.
I've seen a lot more sheriffs and even troopers, and I'm hoping with the summer, we'll be able to use these horse officers there again.
Yeah, we, I talked to Josh at Park Day, and actually, and Joe Craft was here. He's running for sheriff, and I told him about, you know, my thoughts about the village and what was going on, and so he was gonna go back to the department and make note of that, and kind of put it on the hot list, he said, so.
I'm surprised when Renee was here talking about that short street there, that there's all that fast traffic coming down Clinton. It's like, you wouldn't think, and in that short distance.
I see, when I'm walking, I'll see cars flying down through there.
It's unbelievable.
And I keep hearing four-wheelers, a lot of four-wheelers back on Park View.
But you know, interestingly enough, they'll come up Richmond, but they won't come through, because I blocked, I mean, Gary, when Gary was here, he put big boulders. And if I get a kid with an ATV or something, I will politely go out there and say, "You walk it, or you don't come through here."
Where do they go through?
Uh, where I am, at Springdale in the subdivision, I've got a chunk of land that I have, and they've come up the end of Richmond, and they go right into the village property. And they're buzzing up and down on the frisbee cars.
Oh, right.
So, yeah, but anyway, yeah, but I appreciate, I mean, I was on, I was at Richmond the other day, and going, "Holy crap, all these kids."
Yeah.
Jeez. You know?
Okay, I'll let it be known, it's extra, what's going on, so. And we'll have a meeting here, usually once a year, we have a meeting.
Yes.
And...
They'll just come to one of our board meetings?
No, they come during the day we set up on the town. I mean, when they're coming, I can let you all know if you all want to be here, or anyone, if you're open to any of you.
They will come to a board meeting if you want them to.
Okay.
They have in the past.
Okay.
Jail's opening end of July, if you haven't heard.
Oh, yeah.
End of July.
End of July. Very good. Pretty cool, side tour, it's really, really, really neat.
The last thing on, under the old business is, we're on Dep Rock, about a tour of the village facilities. I don't, Courtney had an idea, we could actually do it during a board meeting, we could have us open the meeting, and we could go, you know, visit the various buildings, or if you want to do it, we can't do it three together, because that is basically a meeting. Three trustees can't be together.
State law says that if three board members are together and discussing village meeting, it's a meeting. Discussing village business, then it's a meeting, then it has to be advertised, so the public can be there.
So even a tour is?
Yep.
Okay.
So the public would have the opportunity to go on the tour with us?
Right. If you guys go to the, if you guys go to Oregon's after this meeting, and sit and have a beer, and just three of you, and you're talking anything about village business, that's a meeting, and it's unlawful.
I'm sure there's some members that would like to be aware of this.
If you talk about, go down there and talk about baseball, you're okay, but...
So the best thing would be to do it during a board meeting then? Otherwise, there's really no way around, just unless we separate it.
Right.
How about if we do like a facility at a time, maybe you can do a, go to the sewers, sewn street, play one night, and then, you know, continue on? That's a good idea, so, yeah, because I'd like to see that facility up there.
The sewer plant, I would suggest that we have Chris there, because he's gonna need, I mean, he'll explain the whole process, and how it all works, and everything going on up there, we would need him. So that would require some a little bit of overtime. With the electric, Joe's got that all taken care of, and, and, and the DPW too, so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, sounds good.
So are you saying you'd rather have the sewer done at a different time, not during a board meeting? Or do I have to?
It could be done, it could be during, it just, we'd have the paper over time. Which is not a big deal, but...
So we would, we'd start and then go up, and then come back and continue the meeting?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense, yeah. Okay.
And like I said, anybody in the audience, if they wanted to go with us, they could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, we'll set that up then.
Yeah, so one of these, usually, some meetings are pretty light, so if you don't have that on the agenda, then we can just...
Okay.
We'll play on, we'll play on the next one.
July and August?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on that list would be things like the electric substation?
Yeah, we have two substations.
And the sewer plant.
The DPW, where a lot of the equipment is stored.
Sewer plant is near there, right?
Seachill.
And also, you know, if you guys want to go see something by yourselves ahead of time, or any, any time you want, you're free to do that. Come here, see me anytime, and you can go down, stop, stop seeing Chris anytime, or, hey, you know, I mean, you're free to.
Very good.
roam around the country.
Always good. Speaking of stage, I mentioned to Courtney about, you were looking into getting it cleaned, is, are we back to just having our guys clean it?
I spoke with them, and I, and I told them, I said, "You know, when it's a rainy day out, and nothing else is really, it's not like you're gonna go out and do a lot when it's pouring rain, go in there and give it a thorough cleaning," so I looked at that, and they assured me that they would do that, so.
Good. Yeah, because if we're running it out, and people from the public are using it, you don't want them to get a bit, and the word will spread fast.
No, Anna was very correct in what you said, I was in there too, and I was noticing things. So, no, it's, I addressed it with the guys, and...
Well, that'll save some money for hiring cleaning people.
Yeah, I mean, when it's raining, it's a perfect time to get in there, and clean it really well. So we'll see how that goes.
Very good.
Okay, yeah. Anything else, or proceed to close? Is there a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's hope it warms up.
How was your most?
I'm sweating today.
Put extra blankets on the bed.
No, yeah, it's morning.